Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It is five o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started to make sure we've got enough time to cover the everything on the agenda this evening. So first of all, I'm going to just follow the order, five o'clock PM today on Tuesday, June thirteenth. Roll call, Randy True, Rob Young, Bud Trapp,
Present.
Dick Shacter, excuse Jerry Sheffrin,
Present.
Ray Rothrock, excuse Chris Rannus, excuse Mary Ann Plunder, Dave House, Lynn Iceberg, excuse and myself, Dale Fowler, I'm the chair, present. We now have a quorum. Moving on to oral communications. Sure. Mary Ann has requested we get the names of the people in the audience.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Okay, oral communication. Do we have anybody in the audience or in the Zoom audience would like to make any comments not associated with anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, I see none. I've got a couple of quick ones. Just to announce Communications and Safety Day coming up on June twenty-fourth. Banners are up, announcements are going out. Thank you, Mary Ann, for getting the banners up. It should be an exciting day with a calm trailer here at Town Center, ten to two. Next item, the zone notification badges and tags will be mailed out next week, thanks to Jerry Sheffrin, who's been working on this for several months, and they will hit your mailboxes sometime in the next couple of weeks. So thank you for to Jerry. And one final thing. This is the last meeting for Dave House. Dave is retiring after how many years? More than nine, because I've been on the committee for
Oh, much longer. We go back.
So what's that, twenty years? Oh, my God. So, thank you very much for your wisdom, your time. Forward to actually having you come and participate in new meetings, but we will be having a new member effective tomorrow night. Craig Heber is joining. He lives on Golden Circuit, Portola Green, and he's a ham radio operator, and he actually helped us set up for the last wildfire. So with that, and here's Don Bullard. Thank you, Don. Next, I'd like to go to the review and approval of the minutes. Do we have any comments on the minutes? Moved to approve. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much. Minutes approved as read. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the meet, the meeting, which is the review of the draft of the evacuation plan for Portola Valley, and this has been a tremendous effort by Rob Young and others. Rob is the Chair of our evacuation subcommittee. This has been a long effort. Part of that included bi-weekly meetings with the Department of Emergency Management from the county, the Sheriff's Department, Woodside Fire, and other, other members of the community. So it's been a long process. And Don Bullard, I want to recognize you. Thank you for being here tonight, for questions and comments as we move through it. And so now we have a, a very short presentation from Rob, and then we'll go to comments and questions.
Good evening, everybody. As Dale just said, I'm gonna do a very quick introduction from the evacuation plan subcommittee of the EPC. That's gonna be followed by Don. He's gonna make some comments on this draft evacuation plan. Then we're gonna open it up to comments and questions from the EPC. We're really looking forward to getting that from, from this committee. Then we're gonna open it up to comments and questions from the public. I would like to ask a favor, and that is that if you have typos or minor corrections, if you could please just send them to emergencyprep@portolavalle.net. If you want to remember what that is, it's, it's on the agenda for tonight. So if you go to the, the calendar and the website, that'll refresh your memory. And then if we have time, and I'm hoping so, we can have a discussion by the EPC of what we think the next steps for the draft evacuation plan. I wanted to give you a little bit of a background, because I thought that this might help you understand where we've been and where we are now. Nearly ten years ago, Don Bullard and Woodside Fire created the draft template of an evacuation plan for the town. Never went anyplace. Didn't seem to be urgent evidently in those days. In the past few years, the devastating fires that we've had in California, and our favorite CZU fire on the hills here increased our awareness and the need to evacuate, to evaluate our evacuation plans for fires and other emergency events. In 2021, the evacuation subcommittee of the WPC sent a recommendation to the Portola Valley Town Council to authorize a wildfire evacuation traffic study. As a result, the consulting firm Fear and Peers was chosen to prepare a wildfire traffic capacity evacuation study. The subcommittee of the EPC helped assist Fear and Peers in the drafting, evaluation, and finalization of the traffic study, which was accepted by the Town Council last year in the summer. Continuing on, kind of some background. In early 2022, a subcommittee of the EPC joined with the Town Manager, the San Mateo County Department of Emergency Management, Woodside Fire, the sheriff, to produce evacuation plan for Portola Valley. Throughout 2022, a series of meetings occurred in this evacuation planning group after them. And it was agreed in late last year, 2022, that the evacuation template that was drawn up by Don Bullard almost ten years ago would be used as a guide for the first evacuation plan. That Woodside Fire, with the assistance of the evacuation subcommittee of the EPC, would draw up an initial town of Portola Valley evacuation plan. The draft of that plan that we've been working on together as a team, this which is being presented tonight. I think it's important that the members of the EPC need to recognize Don Bullard, Marshall Heard, Selena Brown, and Woodside Fire for their support and professional guidance in this project. We have been sort of the, the tools to help write it and get it done. Those are the people that have educated us and have really provided the backbone for this. This evacuation plan serves as the initial evacuation plan for Portola Valley. We believe that it is an accurate reflection of our current preparedness and what would happen in an orderly evacuation should it occur this year, especially in this upcoming fire season. Our goal is to have an initial evacuation plan completed by the beginning of this fire season this year for review by the Town Council. However, I think what's important for us to, to recognize is this is not the final evacuation plan. We expect that this plan will need timely, continuous updates to improve it, to account for more detail that needs to be addressed in an evacuation, and incorporate resident input and better information as it becomes available. What we're hoping to do is to get this initial evacuation plan approved by the Town Council. And then there are several of us that feel very strongly and passionate to move on and to continue to add other critical elements to this plan. I'd like now to turn this over to Don Bullard, who's gonna make comments on, on this one.
Thank you, Rob. So this is a
Forgot one slide, Don.
Okay.
I knew I'd missed it. This first evacuation plan reviews the organization and command structure for how decisions will be made and controlled for a threatening hazard that could lead to an evacuation. It is a summary of evacuation levels and resolving actions so that the residents understand what would happen depending upon what level. How emergency public information will be disseminated with different communication channels. A review of responsibilities that residents and special facilities in Portola Valley need to be prepared for and to take during an evacuation. Support information to educate all members of the town in evacuation information and a review of evacuation news. Sorry about that.
Thanks. Thank you, Rob. So like I was gonna say, this, this is a good, well-thought-out plan. We use nationally-recognized standards developed by FEMA. We use those resources in developing this plan. And so it's a good plan, and we have to plan for these kinds of events to happen. Planning is needed, and planning is everything. But you also have to be prepared for unforeseen change, and you have to be prepared to pivot at a moment's notice. During the chaos during these kinds of events, your plan may not go as expected, and you have to be prepared for those changes, and you have to be prepared to pivot. And you have to have a Plan B, or you have to basically when a plan becomes worthless, and depending on the circumstances that are at hand during an event like this, you have to be prepared to have an alternate plan in place, or, for example, be prepared with your alternate evacuation routes. You can't just have one way that you know to get out of town. You have to be prepared to use your alternates if they're available. So the, the big picture here is that planning is everything, but your plan can also become worthless at a moment's notice. And so you have to be prepared for that change and be prepared to pivot and, and, and potentially, maybe you have to stay at home and shelter in place. Or you may have to use a temporary refuge area until we have a safe evacuation route for you to be able to get out of town. So this is a very good, well-thought-out plan, and it is my hope that the town adopts this and implements it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And now, first, we're gonna go to committee members. Questions, comments, clarifications on the evacuation plan. Anything from the committee members? Gary?
I just, as I was reading it, and I realized there are some good, very good warnings that people will get about the situation if they happen to have their AM radio turned on, or if they are wide enough awake. Or if they can hear well enough to hear the siren that the police will be, will have. But there isn't anything that talks about, we'll call it a neighborhood phone tree or something that really once evacuation level is announced, to get a neighborhood, to get a neighborhood really informed and prepared. So that's just a comment that I thought which goes along with my idea that, that we need much more organization of our neighborhoods for emergency preparedness. There's just another instance where it could be
Agreed. He and actually Selena and the Woodside Fire have been working on that for fifteen years. Work on it every year. Very good. Any other comments, questions from the EPC? Mary Ann?
Thanks for, for, to, to Rob and team. I think it's a real good plan. What I would like to see in addition is something really short and easy to read, maybe just one page. So if you are in that chaos, you're telling, you know, Don was just saying, I don't think at that point in time, people will look at page ten or page twenty, where is the evacuation route or which level are we on? So I was thinking maybe we could make, like, like you did, it's just a little bit bigger. Any evacuation route and maybe the levels or some of these things, and really boil them down to the absolute minimum and important information, so you can have this on your kitchen table, and with that, you can put it in your car with your dog and your cat and go.
Okay, that would be something to follow up with later. Okay, good. Any other comments, questions, discussion from the EPC members?
I, I've given my comments to Rob directly.
Okay.
Can I just ask, Don, could comment? In your experience, has there been any neighborhood ways of getting the information out? Have you seen that, heard about that, or am I just smoking something?
The information on evacuations?
You know, if an emergency comes up, does everyone really find out in adequate time, or do some people just not get the message sooner?
Well, communication is always our, probably our number one thing in anything. Communications are the number one. And we can, we can only do our best to get the message out to all the residents that they need to sign up for SMC Alert, they need to sign up for RAVE. The unfortunate thing for us is that we've changed the platform so many times in the last year, year and a half, that we lost a lot of the, the, you know, the, the residents that, that were signed up for it, and then now they have to reassign themselves to it and they're not aware of it. So we need to be building ourselves back up to that point where we have a good percentage of our residents that are signed up for the platform. And then through WPV Ready and, and through our CERT teams, we try to get the message out as, as best possible to use the AM, you know, all the communication, the social, the social media platforms that are available. That's, that's all we have at our disposal to use, and so we try to get everybody involved as best we can.
If I could just make a quick comment. I really think that SMC Alert is the backbone. It will, it will ring a landline, and it will, it will text you. We are hoping, and right now it's planned, although it hasn't been announced, so it's not official, but the day after Communications Day on the twenty-fifth of June, we're gonna have a trial. Selena's out of town right now. We're also hoping to, to do a push to get as many people, additional people that aren't already signed up for it, signed up for it, so that they can get it signed up for it and get it tested. I know in my own personal neighborhood group, which I'm supposedly the leader of, I bought Deafening Airhorns. Airhorns for everybody, because you don't have to worry about the batteries being charged up. And I have to wear with a pair of headsets when I use it. It kills me. And if an emergency comes off, we have a code for how many blaps, what it means, and leave me, if somebody can sleep through that, there's nothing else you can do. But
I think that's a great That's what I'm trying. I think more neighborhoods need to figure out how to do that.
You can buy these airhorns. They're about ten bucks a piece on, on Amazon, and, you know, but you know if it's working or not by the pressure gauge on it. But one of the things that's frustrating to me is how difficult it is to get everybody to be involved in the neighborhood. And so even if you've tried to organize a neighborhood group, there are a lot of people that aren't involved in it, and don't want to be. And so I think it's really critically important that we continue to push the main line means notification that we have done in the past so well, SMC Alert specifically. And that we try to make these, these, these systems work and work well, as well as we can. And then to, to encourage the neighborhood groups to do this, to try to come up, you know, the neighborhood groups looked at using walkie-talkies for a while, and, and I think a number of them use the walkie-talkies, but for a lot of people, walkie-talkies especially are pretty confusing. And an airhorn, if it's blasting at your house, doesn't, that's just one idea, though.
It did. It did. It went well. One of the things we learned from that incident is what we tried to do is we tried to split zones. So we tried to split one of the zones, and it didn't work out as well as what we thought it would. It still, it still worked, and we got everybody out of there, but we didn't get out of there. But I think in the future, we're gonna avoid splitting zones like that, because it got a little confusing towards, towards the end of the
Could people speak, come to a microphone, because otherwise no recording?
Did you go house to house if that fire, or?
Some, some of our crews went house to house, but for the most part, everybody evacuated, choosing.
Any other comments, questions from the committee?
The only comment I have is just how well-done this is and don't trust by the word.
Great. Okay, do we have any questions or comments from anybody in the schoolhouse or? Nan, could you come up to the microphone, please?
I think that one works up at the podium.
At the end, too. Happy to have you on our committee.
Yep, turn it on.
Vice Chair of the Geological Safety Committee, Chat Rocky, right there, is our chair, and he asked me to deliver a message for the committee this evening. First, our committee absolutely congratulates EPC and the evacuation plan subcommittee and Fire District and everyone else on the team involved in putting together this plan did a done a huge, fantastic job. We really appreciate the time and effort everyone has put in to make this plan a reality. Finally, we've got, you know, I left my document over there. We've got a fifty-page document that has really valuable information in it. Okay, our committee discussed your draft. We didn't have a lot of time, but we discussed the draft at our meeting yesterday. And we did notice that the plan is silent on evacuation for combination disasters, for instance, wildfire following a large earthquake. And this is an issue that crosses committee boundaries, is something that we do work on. We have a subcommittee that would like to We have a subcommittee that would like to work with you on evacuation for these combination scenarios. We think the evacuation plan as it stands contains really important information that should be distributed to residents now. Rob said it's a, an initial draft, but it's complete enough, I think, to be really useful because we're entering fire season now and people, people can use the information. We would like to recommend that the plan make provision in the draft or in the first version for a new section that can be added later on evacuation following geologic or seismic disasters. We anticipate that this work will probably take several months, so it's not something could just be added next week. So we, we talk about cascading hazards. All earthquakes of substantial magnitude come with damaging effects. Some are simultaneous and some are sequential, sometimes over a long period of time. In Portola Valley, we do have to plan for damage to people and the built environment, buildings and infrastructure, roads, utilities from a strong shaking, direct earthquake rupture, ground rupture, fire, landslide, liquefaction, and sage. The only hazard we don't have is tsunami here. We have everything else. The main earthquake effects that can put people at immediate risk if their, if their evacuation is impeded, is slowed down. Our fault rupture, fire, landslide, and liquefaction. So in summary, Geological Safety Committee thinks your draft evacuation, evacuation plan is an important, very useful document that should be made widely available to residents as soon as possible. I'd like to, I feel fortunate to have made a copy and I will, I will keep my copy and refer to it. So personally, I appreciate the document. If you like, our subcommittee would be happy to help you over the coming months to add a section on evacuation following complex geologic or seismic events. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Nan. I think you had conversations about that and I think this group would be happy to work with Geological Safety section on combination events like you mentioned.
Thank you. I think that would be, it would be really tremendous.
It'd also be groundbreaking. I've never seen anything like that in any other evac documents. Have you, Don?
For folks and I think it's a great idea and we'd be happy to work with them. It's great in addition, it's needed. And so that's that work we need to do. Dale, is that a pun?
We've got three people ready to go.
Yep.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Nan. Appreciate the support of the Geological Safety Committee. Okay, any other comments, questions from anybody in the audience or out there? I see hand, anybody in the audience here? We'll go, yep. Thank you, Chet. Okay, no other comments in the audience. I'm going to go to the Zoom and I see Rita. Tell us, Rita?
Thank you for having this meeting tonight. Really appreciate all the hard work that this group and the community has put on this topic. If anyone speaks in the audience, we can't hear them. And if you could do a summary of, maybe I think that was Chet that just spoke, what Chet had asked or said. And if, if all the people on the dais could please speak, including you Dale, I'm sorry, into the microphones or just pull them a little closer to yourselves until we could figure out if you guys are going to wear lanyards or lapel mics or something, but this is really important. So the people that can't be here tonight can at least look at the recording or listen to the recording and, and get the gist of what they've missed. But thank you so much and, and thank you for helping make it this a record for the town through this recording. Appreciate it. But if you can do a summary of what Chet said, that would be great.
Thank you, Rita. I, I will try and summarize. Chet wanted to comment about the fact that we need neighborhood groups. He suggested that we have people scattered throughout the town that are knowledgeable on the, on the complete evacuation document that could pass that information along. And he was also very supportive of the fact that we now have a document. People can understand evacuation, which he said is, is a very important thing for the whole town. That is about, about right, Chet? Great. Okay, so on to the next, I see a phone number ending in three oh five six. Please unmute yourself and, and proceed with your question, comment.
Hi, it's Dana, you guys. I, I am so thrilled. I congratulate you. I am grateful. I think that everybody in town needs to receive this in the mail. And then just to be able to have it in your, there's so much information that's helpful. And also, Don Bullard, thank you for your participation in this also. I, I just, I think it's so wonderful that our community of residents got it together to do this. Anyway, thank you, Dale. Good for you.
Thank you, Dana. It is primarily Rob Young here, who has been leading this for a long period of time. Okay, next hand up in the audience is David Barnett. David, you have the floor. Thank you.
Yeah, hello, Portola Valley. My name's David Barnett. I'm with San Mateo County Department of Emergency Management. Can you hear me, Brandon?
Yes, we hear you quite well. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm here on behalf of San Mateo County Department of Emergency Management, Don Matei and, and Brian Kelly. I am moving into his position as he enjoys retirement. So I just want to first congratulate the community, the subcommittee, Don Bullard, all the participants and, and the work that has been done and echo and what everyone else has said. San Mateo County DEM fully supports your efforts. We're not in a position of approval and we appreciate the opportunity to provide input. And I thought this would be inappropriate for him and Don Matei and DEM thought this would be appropriate for him to share briefly that the county is engaging in a countywide risk assessment for evacuation roads. They are, we are planning on updating in a one-year to eighteen-month effort, the county's evacuation plan. And we will engage with Portola Valley as you're willing to engage. And we really appreciate, and you know, our conversation with Don and knowing that this is not a one-time document. And we will look to engage with you of, and make recommendations for any updates and inputs based on the countywide plan. So, you know, keep an open mind. Again, I think this relationship that Don has established and the committee has established before my arrival to get that input and to stay coordinated with the county only makes your plan stronger. And so again, we applaud the efforts. The countywide plan, like I said, will be, we're gone through RFP, we're about to hire the, we're not too far off from hiring the vendor. Go through a risk assessment and then the county's plan will be, be updated. And then we'll, we'll keep Don and, and the community engaged. And yeah, again, appreciate your efforts. We'll stay coordinated and, and communicating with you and congratulations on what you've done.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thanks very much, David. I, I, I hope I emphasized enough that this is just the initial plan. We're really looking very much forward to continuing to work with you guys. And we appreciated all the inputs that you've made in the past. I really think that this has been a great team effort that we've had over the last two years. And especially with this earthquake addition that we need to make, I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys know and getting educated. I know that the, the fine geologists that we have in Portola Valley are hopefully going to be able to give me a little bit of education too. I'm really looking forward to that. But I wanted to emphasize with you how much we appreciated everything the DEM has done. And that continued effort, this plan, as Don has said, the famous Dwight Eisenhower, a plan is worthless. It's the planning and the continued process that's everything.
Yeah, absolutely. And one of the things I'll comment on, having been involved in evacuations up and down the state and wildfire and other hazards is the core wildfire evacuation plan truly does provide the thought processes for a community, for leadership, for fire, for law that are implementing the evacuations to apply towards other hazards, even if the appendix for that hazard isn't in place. Montecito flood was an example where they implemented wildfire zone evacuations and needed to adjust on the fly because some of the bridges couldn't, you know, were out and that had to be communicated to residents. And there was a little bit of chaos, but the thought processes of zones of communities being prepared, knowing they might have to pivot, the training, the planning is truly the foundation that makes communities safe. And so I, I think it's important and your plan to get it out, to let this be the basis and then, you know, not waiting for every single detail for every single hazard. I, I would completely agree with that because there are too many variables, too many opportunity needs to pivot for other hazards or combination of hazards or. So this is truly the first step and I applaud again your efforts.
Thanks again, Dave. Okay, do we have any other comments from the room or from the Zoom audience? Okay, seeing oh. Could you come up to a microphone, please, so we can hear you?
Sit down.
That works really well.
I thought I'd share with you that I contacted Mayor Lydia Cal. I'm concerned about the eucalyptus trees on Arastadera Road. I know it's Palo Alto, but a lot of us drive out that road. If you've ever Los Altos Hills goes up to a Tracy Court and then after that it's Palo Alto and then it hits Portola Valley. So she said she would give it to her staff. And if you've ever driven it, you'll see more eucalyptus coming over the road and probably within a mile or two of where the accident happened. I thought I'd just report that.
Great. Thank you, Kristy. Okay, any other comments, questions? We'll close that public comment, bring it back to committee. Do we have anything, any final comments or questions on the committee?
No, just, I was listening, you know, if ZOTS is full and we have an emergency evacuation, that, that seems to add a level of complexity that is likely to be very problematic. Not that I have an answer for it, but I don't know how, how you can bake in option for that.
There, there, I'm going to make one comment there is, is that this committee recommended almost two years ago, maybe three, that we put signs coming into and out of town to tell people in an emergency to turn sixteen eighty, the AM radio station, which I think is quite important because of the number of contractors, transients, people using our trails and so on, to know that, that we do have an AM radio station. And, and I passed that on to Craig Taylor to try and get that resolved. So that's one thing I can think about. Rob has one other.
So you probably noticed in reading this, we talked about special facilities and that each special, special facility needs to wake up and have their own evacuation plan. Don Bullard and the Portola Valley Public Schools have worked very hard on this and are very close to bringing the whole community in on what their plan is. But part of this is businesses such as ZOTS. And we need to reach out and to talk with them and to help them understand that they are responsible for understanding how they are going to execute an evacuation of their business. And part of that is they need to stay up to date with, they need to have a way so that they are notified if something is happening, that they need to take response on. And we need, this isn't finger pointing whose responsibility it is and we're not going to help somebody. We're, we're all on this together. And I would hope that this subcommittee would continue on helping with other schools and with businesses and with some of the special facilities and making sure that they have evacuation plans that their employees understand or the residents understand. And these sub evacuation plans are really quite important. You know, the, the town and all cannot be responsible for drawing up plans for these organizations. The organizations who are, who own their own facilities are responsible for doing that. Don, do you have anything?
No, I think that was well said. They have a personal responsibility for every one of those facilities that contains a number of people. They have a responsibility to prepare for and provide a safe way to evacuate. But that's, that, that would be one way that you would be able to empty that lot quicker than, than just having one. Twice as fast, so that would potentially be one way.
The, the the comment Kristy, the comment from the audience was about a second exit for the ZOTS parking lot.
That's, that's one way strategy to help empty that lot.
Gary, this is, I, I, I'm glad you brought that up. I think, I think this is the exact kind of issue that we're looking to get into the plan and the next revisions and the special circumstances and the higher hazard situations that are unique to you know, perhaps even whether they're unique to Portola Valley or whether they're particular risk, particular risk people to Portola Valley. We're going to start to identify these specifics and anticipate, prioritize around them. And so, you know, for example, with respect to ZOTS, what we can do is help get the information from them in terms of when they're busiest. So if, if we are to have a very serious event happen during the time where they're busy, that's the kind of information you can put in the plan because then the authorities, whether it's, whether it's the DEM, whether it's with the fire, it's, it's, we're putting some of the important specific information, not just in our residents, but, but collectively making it available to everyone involved. And so I hope as we move forward in, in the plan and this doc, continue to get this kind of input on these ideas on where, what are these specific situations where we have particular problems and, and then start to deal with it. problems and then start to deal with those.
Yeah, and to your point, Randy, this, this, you know, once implemented, this plan can't just sit on the shelf. A plan is designed to, you know, if we use it and we practice it, it'll identify what the vulnerabilities are and then we can address those. So you need to practice it. You need to have drills with it and you need to do it once or twice a year to make sure that people are, you know, understanding how this works and helping to identify what those risks and vulnerabilities are so that we can provide solutions for it.
Yeah, actually, you bring up a good point with ZOTs and what are the busiest times. I drove by recently. Unfortunately, I don't remember when, what time it was, but it was like a gridlock in there. They were park, triple park, quadruple park. People were standing all over the place and it was a calm day. So I don't know how many people are in this parking lot who might be hiking. I don't know how this works at ZOTs. Because when I saw the cars, I thought this is not possible that all these cars are eating there. But putting into a mix some sort of evacuation, I think these people will have no chance at the moment to get out, none whatsoever.
I think maybe that's something we ought to look at and maybe this committee ultimately will recommend to the town council or planning commission that ZOTs come up with an evacuation plan.
One of the reasons I brought it up was a while ago, a few weeks ago, I was going, trying to go out Arastadero. And they park all along that side there and everyone's walking to their car. So I'm imagining if they're all trying to leave at once, Arastadero now becomes a nonusable road
Evacuation.
For evacuation.
I want to know, how does this plan fit into Santa Clara County, which we brought? We're going to be going, if we go down to Arastadero, suddenly we're out of Portola Valley, out of San Mateo County, into another county. How does this plan fit into what goes on in Santa Clara County?
That's a, that's a bigger issue and we heard the San Mateo County is developing a countywide plan. And that countywide plan is going to have to interface with Santa Clara County.
In the meantime.
In the meantime, we have, our primary route is still going to be Alpine Road in Portola with Arastadero as a secondary route. And then that came up in the traffic study and it was interesting in the traffic study, Arastadero didn't take that, didn't take the brunt of the traffic out of Portola Valley. It took a relatively small portion of the traffic. Yeah.
So I think, I think that's a good point. In the traffic study, the magnitude of the cars parked at ZOTs was not inputted into that. And so that clump of cars that's trying to evacuate at that point is something that we, we do have software that we can be doing updated traffic analysis on. Nobody is really focused on that right now, but I think that the ZOTs issue is primarily going to be a traffic evacuation issue.
It's not just ZOTs. People play soccer there and on the town soccer field. Those will be kids and parents and all that sort of stuff. They're tied up by ZOTs.
Well, it'll be anybody who's parked in that park.
I know, but.
For whatever their purpose is, they're, they're going to be.
The soccer people will be penned in by ZOTs people.
So that's, that's an interesting question of whose responsibility it is to figure out how to make that work. So I think that's one of the, that's one of the ones that we need to pick up and figure out, you know, how it's going to be handled. Who's going to figure it out? Would you like to volunteer, bud?
There's some other higher surge times on weekends around trail use. I read at the corner of Alpine and Willow Brook in that, since the pandemic. It's just overloaded. Cars, cars are parked all the way down Willow Brook. So I mean, I think this, this reveals that we should probably have a section in the plan that describes some of these situations where specific sites at specific times are anticipated to have X amount larger, larger surge of cars and people. And then the hikers is the additional complexity. They're likely on the trails, like up, you know, up hands go.
If the sky is red, they won't be on the trail long. Yeah, right.
I think this gets a bigger issue of, you know, from here, where, where do we put in our time and effort and planning that can, that can have the most impact? This is the type of feedback we're really looking for from fellow committee members, from all of the, all of the serving authorities up and down the levels and then especially from, from the community. So we really want to gather as much information at this stage as we can, but then also be efficient in getting this plan adopted in place with the expectation it's going to be improved. And part of, part of this plan is, is, is knowing you have more work to do.
So what do we want to do today? Do we want to vote on this, council?
Well, hang on, one more comment from Dave, David Barnett.
Yeah, I just, I'm listening in and I am going to be chairing and help taking on leadership with the wildfire resiliency steering committee for the county underneath the board of supervisors, Mueller and Canapa. And I just, there's a lot of subjects that you're covering and I just want to encourage that when it, fire adaptive or fire wise communities, evacuation road and the plan is one leg. You also have code enforcement. You also have defensible space and home hardening programs, vegetation reduction programs, and they're all intertwined. So, you know, there is the need for vegetation reduction in roads that needs to be implemented and the evacuation planning will feed into potentially code development or enforcement needs. It will feed into vegetation reduction programs. And we will do what we can at the county level to identify communities like yours where we can come in with that holistic community approach. But one of the things that I encourage you in the evacuation planning and notification is focus on that. And if you identify other areas, you, too many hurdles to an effective evacuation may not be related to the evacuation plan itself. It just may need to be addressed in a different mechanism, but it doesn't invalidate the plan. So I just encourage you that, you know, and I actually just attended a meeting today from the state and that's defined it very well. Evacuation plan and response is one leg of it. And then you've got home hardening, defensible space programs. You've got vegetation management programs, code enforcement. And, you know, you've done a tremendous work in one leg of the program and it can be very difficult if you're combining everything into one. So I just wanted to encourage you that, not to make it too complicated, but I don't lose sight of those individual items that you may need to take care of to support an effective evacuation. But the plan itself, from my review of it, is, is an excellent one. So I just thought I'd make that comment so you don't get, you know, diverted with very good input of things that need to be taken care of, but may not be related to the plan itself.
Right, that's a, that's a really good point. Some of these individual responsibilities of these groups isn't, can't be part of our plan. I mean, we don't really have control over lots. I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the town, but it's private property. Okay, yes.
It's Dana. Can I talk?
Of course.
I want to say about if, when we're evacuating, Arastadero is one way. So I mean, it, it needs to become one way. So all the Rosati's people, no one's going to, there won't be gridlock. They have no choice but to take Arastadero out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Oh, hi, Kristi.
I just wanted to comment about the Hawthorns planning and, and we don't know how many parking places they will have in addition to Wendy Hill, in addition to our schools, in addition to the workers that come into this town. Is there any way to get averages of workers coming into town by our license plate readers and get exact numbers rather than statistics from elsewhere? Because we have access to that and we should be using our license plate readers. For example, on Mondays, Alpine is closed, so you will get less people that day. And Alpine swim and tennis facility, eating facility is closed. So we have to look at Saturdays for Ford Field for baseball as well. So I do think we have the ability to get some averages on the extra cars that come in for these special mid, mid pen Wendy Hill Hawthorns. We have to plan, I think they're planning to be built by 2025 or '26. So that's part of this plan as well. And because it's a shorter distant hike, they think that we'll be getting a lot of people. It won't be Wendy Hill people that need to go four miles up straight up. The parking will be nice and flat and it will attract a lot of people.
Thanks, Kristi. Some of those specifics, as far as that, we do have a software program called Latris. Woodside Fire is using it. We have some access to it and I think we're going to be trying to look at some of these scenarios over the next, next year.
Yeah, it's perfectly capable of running that.
Running that.
We can put a parking lot full of X amount of cars and run it that way and see what happens.
No, I think that's, that's the plan. Okay, we're going to go back to the issue of Nann. And I think the plan is that we would like to get everybody's input, public input into the plan. Rob and Randy will run with that over the next month and bring it up for approval at the next EPC meeting in July, oh my God, July already. And for approval so that we can send it on to the town council because I think many people have said, not perfect. But it's also important that we make it a living document that can be adjusted as new information comes out, but we need to have something and we need to get it out.
I have a question. I noticed nobody's here from the wildfire committee. Have we gotten any input since the last meeting from the wildfire committee?
No. Okay, so does that sound like a reasonable plan? Bring it before this full committee and at the July meeting for approval. No, we don't need a motion because it's just a plan. We aren't approving anything. Okay, do we have any final comments, closing comments from anybody on the committee, anybody in the public? Nan.
Oh, yes. I just encourage you to get the first initial final version, whatever you want to call it, the, the public version out as soon as you can. I really think it's important and personally I think it's important. I'm not speaking for my committee, just for myself. So if you can get it, you know, get a final version in July, that would be great because we're already in fire season and I think the information is going to be, you know, if we have a wildfire, it's going to be essential for people to have. I also just wanted to say, I really liked the page with the information on large animal evacuation. In the CZU fire, I had, we were ready to go, ready to evacuate. And there were two horses in the yard and large corral. And I didn't know what to do with them. So I was ready to take a Sharpie down and write my cell phone number on the horses and then just leave. It's not the right thing to do. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Nan. Hey, and with that, Dave.
We might want to point out, I think the document itself is on the website currently.
Yes.
So anybody that has a computer can access this document.
Updated the, and for all typos that we've gotten and there are some leaks that aren't working. So give us a couple of weeks before everybody prints it out, okay?
If I may, yeah, if anyone can pick up the document from the agenda for today. But if, I think it needs a little bit of advertising, a little marketing here so people really know that they should be looking for it and download it and print it out and have it in their house.
Yeah. Okay, with that, thank you.
One last final thing, Dale.
Go ahead, Randy.
We should both thank Rob for his leadership and wish him happy birthday. Dealing with such a serious issue on your birthday takes, you know, a special person and we are lucky to, we are lucky to have Rob in our town and it's important on it.
Randy, you lead me to it. It's Dana. Lead me to it, Rob.
Well, you, you can sing, Dana.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob, for everything you did and happy birthday for God's sake.
Thank you, Rob. You put a lot of work into this. A lot of the heavy lifting came from you.
Thank you to Woodside Fire. They super helped.
Thank you.
Couldn't have done it without.
And happy birthday, Rob.
Okay, and thank you all very much. And again, thank you, Dave House, for your multi-decade participation on the committee. We appreciate your efforts. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn. All in favor? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Yeah, end of the year.